Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session. Today is Saturday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The time is ten sixteen A.M. My name is Speaker William Lowe and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Major McHenry from Broken Arrow Indian United Methodist Church to come forward and say our dedication. Please stand if you're able. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share a song with you and to say a prayer. It's a privilege and an honor to be able to come and do this. You've got it on your seat. What you all relate it's got. Creator God, make them all things. I'll just come and pray this morning and just give you thanks for another day that you've given to us. I come to this morning just to ask the Lord that you would just be with us throughout this meeting. We ask that you continue to bless our chief, second chief. Bless our council. Be with them in all the decisions they make, be with them in all the meetings they're at. Just continue to watch over them, bless them, direct them, continue to give them wisdom, give them strength, carry on for the duties that you've laid before them. Thank you for the opportunity to come and sing and share a song. Opportunity to come and just be here this day. We ask that you continue to bless our nation, bless our people, bless all our Muskogee people within the reservation and outside the reservation. Continue to watch over us. Let your light shine down upon us. Continue to be with our elders. Continue to give them good health, Father. Continue to watch over them. To speak with those that are in mourning this day. Just keep and give them comfort, give them strength, watch over them. Thank you for thankful to be able to come and be here this day and let our nation be able to conduct business and now to continue to bless them, watch over them, be their strength, be their guidance, be their wisdom. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your love. We thank you for your mercy. And we ask all these things in your son's name. Amen. (Music) Madou, Mr. McHenry. Next item on the agenda, roll call, National Council Secretary of the District.
Speaker William Lowe.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
Yalaga.
Mary Crawford.
Yalaga.
Joyce Steer.
Yalaga.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Sandra Golden.
Present.
Leonard Gouge.
Here.
Nelson Harjo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Randall Hicks.
Present.
Robert Huff.
Present.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Speaker, you have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent. That constitutes a quorum. Any business conducted this morning will be out. At this time, I'd like to take a few minutes to recognize some dignitaries within our audience today. I would like to introduce our Muskogee Creek Nation Principal Chief, Dave Hill. Madou, speak with the server. Former Second Chief Louis Hicks. Please stand and be recognized by the committee. Coming all the way from the United Tubman with us this morning, we have Principal Chief Joe Bunch. Earlier, we had Second Chief Jeff Wakachi. He comes right here. He's coming in right now. Thank you for being here. I would like to introduce our World Team, Princess Team of the Arctic. (Applause) Junior Miss Muskogee Nation, Shannova Barnett. We have the Muskogee Riders, who my right, your left. Please stand and be recognized, Madou, for being here. And we have the Muskogee Women's Veterans. Please stand and be recognized, Madou, for being here. We feel very protected this morning. Thank you so much. Order of Business. TR twenty-two dash one six three. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a contract with RMM Plus for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsored, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion to adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huff makes a motion to adopt. Seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one six three is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one six four. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a program agreement among Chattahoochee River, National Recreation Area, National Park Service, Georgia State Historic Preservation Office, Eastern Man of Cherokee Indians, and the Muskogee Creek Nation regarding the undertaking implemented under Comprehensive Trails Management Plan, HP two-one-zero-three-three-zero-dash-zero-zero-two. Sponsored, Representative Galen Cloud.
(Speaking in English).
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one six four is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one six five. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a real estate contract for property located in Okmogi, Oklahoma, excuse me, Okmo County, Oklahoma. Sponsored, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one six five is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one six six. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation approving a construction contract for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing. Sponsored, Representative Galen Cloud.
(Speaking in English).
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one six six is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one six seven. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of the Interior, Bureau of Indian Affairs, Office of Indian Economic Development, Division of Economic Development for the Tribal Tourism Grant Program for the benefit of the Marketing and Tourism Department. Sponsored, Representative Randall Hicks.
Thank you, Speaker. Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one six seven is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one six eight. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of the Interior, Bureau of Indian Affairs, Office of Indian Economic Development, Division of Economic Development for the National Tribal Broadband Grant for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Utility Authority. Sponsored, Representative Nelson Harjo Senior.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Nelson Harjo Senior makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Any discussion? No discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposition, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one six eight is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one six nine. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing Tradin Anderson the use of the Great Seal of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsored, Representative Daryl Proctor.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Daryl Proctor makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one six nine is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven zero. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending TR nineteen dash zero-seven-six. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation to suspend all special appropriations and donations as amended by TR twenty-two, excuse me, TR twenty dash one-five-zero, TR twenty-one dash zero-eight-zero, TR twenty-two dash one-two-eight, TR twenty-two dash one-four-three, TR twenty-two dash one-five-zero, and TR twenty-two dash one-five-five. Sponsored, Representative Joyce Steer.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joyce Steer makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mary Crawford. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
No.
Robert Huff.
No.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
No.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Oh.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Speaker, you have ten in favor, five against.
With ten in favor, five against, TR twenty-two dash one seven zero is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-two-seven. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the National White Collar Crime Center Grant Award for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Police Department. Sponsored, Representative Sandra Golden.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-two-seven is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-three-nine. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Oklahoma District Attorney's Council, D.A.C., Victims of Crime Act Vaca Grant. Sponsored, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion to adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huff makes a motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-three-nine is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-four-zero. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority, Money Follows the Person Tribal Initiative Grant. Sponsored, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion to adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huff makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-four-zero is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-four-one. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of Tribal Opioide Response Funds awarded from the Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Center for Substance Abuse Treatment. Sponsored, Representative Joyce Steer.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joyce Steer makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mary Crawford. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-three-nine. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Oklahoma District Attorney's Council, D.A.C., Victims of Crime Act Vaca Grant. Sponsored, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion to adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huff makes a motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-four-zero is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-four-one. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of Tribal Opioide Response Funds awarded from the Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Center for Substance Abuse Treatment. Sponsored, Representative Joyce Steer.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joyce Steer makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mary Crawford. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-four-one is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-four-two. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN CA Title Fifteen, Chapter One, entitled Official Honor Guard to Establish a Woman's Honor Guard in Appropriating Funds for the Estegadi Hocti G Saladawa Honor Guard. Sponsors are Representative Anna Marshall, co-sponsors, Representative William Lowe, and Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, I'd like to be added as co-sponsor. Also, as a veteran myself, I'd like to be added.
Representative Leonard Gouge requests to be a co-sponsor. Sponsor, are you okay?
Yes.
Representative Anna Marshall agrees. We will add Representative Leonard Gouge as a co-sponsor. Do we have a motion?
To adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Speaker.
Representative Golden.
Yes. I just wanted to make a comment that I didn't really want to support this because it makes women separate from the men and it looks as if the men can't acknowledge the women because of something different. But they should be the same. So if this is the only way we're going to get that attention and that acknowledgement, then I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Madou, Representative Golden, any other comments? Hearing no other comments, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-four-two is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-four-one. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of Tribal Opioide Response Funds awarded from the Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Center for Substance Abuse Treatment. Sponsored, Representative Joyce Steer.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joyce Steer makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mary Crawford. Discussion. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash one-four-zero is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one-four-one.
not only those who are here today, but as we grow. This is, I believe, a slice, a small slice of our, for our other sisters who have served and who want to reach out to us. I hope that with your support, and with our nation's Veterans Affairs support, we can reach those, and we can stand arm-in-arm with our Estegadi Hoktigi Saladawa Honor Guard. Madou.
Outstanding. Madou. Yes, ma'am, by all means. Ms. Brenda.
I won't talk as long as A.G. Hill. I just wanted to recognize Anna Marshall for this. She especially invited me today, and I want to thank her for sponsoring this bill and for the other cosponsors. I do want to say that we have many, many women veterans as citizens of the Muskogee Creek Nation, that this is only a small sample of us. That I have a cousin that served in the Marines. I served in the Air Force for eight years.
I was in the Air Force for four years. I have a friend who's currently in the Army deployed. I know more.
And so we, we think that this is just the beginning, and we're very appreciative of, of the assistance. I also want to take notice that we are breaking the glass ceiling today by establishing our Women's Veterans. Thank you.
Madou.
First, I want to say, Madou, to... To give us a separate voice, not for us to fall underneath our brothers, whom I always loved serving with, but it gives us a voice. Because we signed on that dotted line just as well as them. But you, by you giving us this chance, you also make a statement to the rest that have served, are serving, that will serve, that we matter. This land has always been our land to protect, and that's what I went in for, to protect this land, my children, our people. But I thank y'all for letting us have that separate kind of identity, and that's what this has given us. Madou, to all of y'all. Thank you.
Excuse me, Megan Lowery, United States Marine Corps veteran. I would also like to say thank you again to Anna Marshall for sponsoring this and all the cosponsors. Thank you all very much. To the whole council and to the chief, I just want to say, Madou, thank you for making history today. Thank you for recognizing our exemplary service and giving us this opportunity to, to show our, our nation what women veterans stand for, which is honor, dignity, and respect. Madou.
Outstanding. You're welcome.
I'm a retired Air Force veteran, and I would just like to say I greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve with my other women warriors.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. Thank you.
Madou, my name is Andrea Butler, and I'm an Army veteran. I came to tears up there because we are no longer separate but equal. And I appreciate y'all taking the time to make us feel that way.
Yes, ma'am. Great, great.
Nice to meet you. Leslie Montemar, Jeff Gudros, Vanessa Madou. My name is Leslie Montemar, retired Sergeant First Class, 22 years in the Army National Guard with three deployments. And I respect your comments, and I understand that, but I will let you know that being on this Honor Guard, it will allow us to begin our healing journey from the unseen battles that we faced while serving in the military. So, thank you for today.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Speaker. I forgot to announce that our very first meeting will begin immediately at the conclusion of this morning's council meeting. We will be at the Octagon at the Muskogee Nation Rehab. Madou.
Standing. Thank you so much. Once again, ladies, congratulations. Such an honor, such an honor. Madou, everyone, back to the order of business. NCA 22-143, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN CA Title 37, subsection 2-123, entitled Estegadi Veterans Muskogee Nation Honor Guard. Sponsor Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Yehola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against?
15 in favor, zero against. NCA 22-143 is adopted. NCA 22-144, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for the benefit of the Office of Environmental Services Department. Sponsor Representative Nelson Harjo Senior.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Nelson Harjo Senior makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Yehola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Alan Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against?
15 in favor, zero against. NCA 22-144 is adopted. NCA 22-145, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation appropriating funds to be used toward the purchase of property located in Oakmogee County, Oklahoma. Sponsor Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Nelson Harjo Senior. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Alan Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against?
15 in favor, zero against. NCA 22-145 is adopted. The last item on the agenda will require a two-thirds vote from the full council. NCA 22-148, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a donation to Baycone College. Sponsor Representative Joyce Steer.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joyce Steer makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mary Crawford. Do we have any discussion?
Speaker.
Wait on the sponsor, please, sir. Go ahead, sponsor.
Speaker, thank you. We had our discussion earlier in pre-agenda, and at this time, I would like to ask our royalty... Oh, I'm sorry, she can't. Okay, no discussion. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
No discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Speaker.
Representative Joseph Hicks.
I'd just like to ask the sponsor if I can be a cosponsor on this, please.
Representative Joseph Hicks asks the sponsor, can he be the cosponsor?
Yes.
Yes, sir, you can. We will add Representative Joseph Hicks as a cosponsor. Representative Nelson Harjo.
Yes, I, I would like to ask if we could give time for our college president, Dr. Monty Randall.
Dr. Monty Randall, would you like to come down and share your views on this bill, please, sir? Just make sure the, the microphone is turned on, please.
Let's don't go kamogadi. Jay, everyone, thank you for giving me this, this opportunity. You know, very, very complex issue with, with the donation to Baycone College. I'm currently serving Muskogee Owa Nakchoga Mahagas Soho Ije Emiko. Currently serving as the president of the College of the Muskogee Nation. You know, I've heard some, some discussion on, on the donation this past week, and very, very glad that you gave me this opportunity to speak today on this. You know, and, and at, you know, at first look at this, you know, it may look that I, I'm against a donation towards Baycone College, and, and I want to assure you all that, that that is not the case at all. I'm not against Baycone College. College of the Muskogee Nation and Baycone, actually, we have a long history of, of working together. You know, we've, we, we spent a lot of time in, in 2016, working on an, an articulation agreement with, with previous administrators. We spent several months meeting, coming over, them coming over to our offices and sitting down and talking about how can we help each other? How can we, how can we get CMN graduates onto bachelor's degrees? And we, and we, we talked to all kinds of, of institutions, you know, and, and for, for us in higher ed, you know, it's not about liking or disliking another institution, it's about mutual respect that we have for one another. You know, respect, you know, coming over and sitting down and visiting with us, and how do we get our graduates to other institutions? And the first thing that we always talk about, it's not, you know, other institutions come to us and say, how do we get your students to come to our, to our institutions? And the first thing that we always say at the College of the Muskogee Nation is, we want our graduates to go on. You can't have our students. You can come over here and, and we'll help you get our graduates into your institution of four-year degree programs. That's, that's what we, that's what we want. That's our goal. And, and eventually, our goal will be to be that bachelor's degree institution for this Muskogee Creek Nation. That's our goal, is, is to get us to have those bachelor's degrees. So even though we, we're coming off of a reaffirmation visit from the Higher Learning Commission in 26, in, in 2020, that put us on the standard pathways of the Higher Learning Commission, you know, we've got another HLC site visit in 2026 that will continue us on standard pathways, and then, and then the goal is to continue on to get us accredited for those bachelor's degree programs here at the College of the Muskogee Nation. So we've, we, we sat down with Baycone and hammered out an articulation agreement that would allow for our graduates to seamlessly move into Baycone Institution. You know, they, they further asked us if they could come over and have classes on our campus, and we agreed. But yes, absolutely, we'll do whatever we can to help out to get our graduates to, to, to a four-year degree program. We offered assistance on using our classrooms, our technology, our library, our database, our student services, just as, just as OSU IT did the same for us. We extended that, that same hospitality, that same working relationship, that same mutual respect that, that was, was given to us. And so we, we offered that, and that, that also, that also triggered a site visit from HLC to come to our campus in 2017. And so we hosted HLC on Baycone's behalf to, to come, and we, we sat down with HLC, and we had a site visit with them, and we, they were approved, approved to hold classes on our campus. And so shortly thereafter, I, I, I don't believe any classes were actually, were ever held on, on campus, and, you know, we had some, some, some change in the administration at, at Baycone, and then it seemed that in 2018, 2019, we started a lot of these discussions over again. And so I don't, I don't believe we ever, ever actually had those classes on campus, and I don't know how many of our graduates went on to fulfill in that, in that articulation agreement. But, so I, so I just wanted to, to say that, to let you all know, you know, it, it's not about, I'm against Baycone, you know, and, and it's not about the funding, it's not about this funding amount, 250,000. I'm not saying give that to me and the College of the Muskogee Nation. That's not it at all either. You know, because we have a budget that we're going to bring up in, in a couple of weeks, and, and, you know, and, and we have a strategic plan, you know, designed for planned growth. And so whenever we get to those points on bachelor's degrees and athletics and more student services and expanding our campus and more buildings, believe me, I'll, I'll bring that to you, and, and then I'll ask for that additional money. But I'm not asking to give me that money. That, that's not the case at all. That, that is not the case at all. And the reason why I stand here today and giving my thoughts on, on this, on this donation is that this nation, Muskogee Creek Nation, is committed 100% to the College of the Muskogee Nation. Whenever enabling legislation took place to, to form this college, this council voted to support College of the Muskogee Nation 100%. In 2009, the citizens of the Muskogee Creek Nation voted to amend our constitution, to put our, our governing board, our, our Board of Regents on our constitution. In 2013, whenever we are going through our accreditation process, and we went to the Department of Education to allow, to, to certify us, to issue Title IV Federal Financial Aid, the, the principal chief at that time signed a letter of full faith and credit that the Muskogee Nation 100% backs this institution. As, as we go to HLC, time and time again, from, as I've been there, 2012, 2014, 2016, and, and when they came in 2020, and then we see them again in 2026, time, time and time again, the first thing that they'll always ask us is our, is our governance structure. They want to ask about our governance. What does that mean? What is a, what is a tribal nation? There's only, there's only 35 tribal colleges in the United States. There's only one in Oklahoma. You know, we, we go and we visit with other university presidents, with other university CFOs, vice presidents, and, and they're the ones who are, who are critiquing us in, in the Higher Learning Commission. They're, they're the ones who, who we go and we have to report to. And, and, and they, they don't necessarily understand tribal politics, tribal government. How is this tribal college exist? How is your tribe exist with a, a tribal government? And then you have a constitutional buffer, and now you have a Board of Regents. So I, I say all that to give you the, to give you the background, to give you the history of it. You know, does, does this legislation jeopardize the accreditation of the College of the Muskogee Nation? I, I can't say that for certain. I'm, I'm not the one who reviews those. I can just tell you from my experience of, of what I, what I've seen, what I've had to go, go and talk about at the Higher Learning Commission, and I can tell you that, that's their number one question is, you know, where, what is your governance structure? Who funds you? You know, who else do they fund? Who, you know, they, they want to know these things to, to ensure that we are secure, that to ensure that we are able. You know, we, we have to maintain reserves for the Department of Education. And so initially, that's what that, that's what that line of credit was in 2013. This Muskogee Nation said, if anything ever happens to the College of the Muskogee Nation and the Department of Ed, the, the federal government needs to recoup any money, they're coming to the Muskogee Creek Nation because you're, you're the ones who signed the, the full faith and credit for us. And that, and that's how, that's how the institutions work, you know, state institutions, they're backed by the states, and the states' regents govern them. Private institutions, they have their trustees, their, their donor base, and those donors are, are financially responsible for those institutions. So that, that, that's my, that's my concern is, you know, and, and again, like I said, it's not anything personal. It, it's, we operate, we operate a business. We, we own and operate, all of us in here, we own and operate this business.
Thank you, Dr. Randall. Appreciate you, sir. Do we have any comments, questions? Representative Hicks?
Got a couple, Speaker. Uh, Dr. Randall, can Creek Nation not 100% back CMN and still not, and donate to another? Can we not back y'all 100% and still donate to someone else?
You know, I, I don't, I don't know that I have that answer for you. You know, optics are, are a big, you know, a, a big thing, you know.
Well, I'm not worried about the optics. I just want to know if our tribe can back y'all 100% and still be able to donate to someone else.
I mean, i- i- if you're asking me personally, I would say the answer to that is no. If you're 100% behind us, then don't give anything to any other institution. I mean, if you're asking me, I, I don't have that answer for you. I mean, you're asking me personally, so I'm telling you, I'm, I'm responding personally that the answer to me is no.
So going off of that, do we not have programs within our tribe that pays OSU monies for our students?
Students?
Yes.
Yes, I, I believe so.
So you're saying that we can't give to other schools?
If you're asking me personally.
But we're giving to OSU for students of ours?
Yeah. Well, if it's going direct, is it going directly to the, the institution for, for operational costs, or, or is it going to students?
We have a fiber optic program run through reintegration that that money from Creek Nation goes to them for the students. So is that not the same thing?
Hard, hard to say on, on that. You know, if, if it's being run by the, by the tribe, then I, I would say it's, it's the tribes.
So we're wrong? Is that what you're saying?
Who's, who's wrong?
You're saying the tribe's wrong for giving this money to OSU for these students?
Not directly to students, no.
No, that's what I'm asking.
You, I mean, we, we have the higher ed program that provides funding to students. I mean, scholarships go to the institutions directly, and then they distribute that to students.
With the reintegration program, our fiber optic program down there has a deal with OSU where their monies go straight to OSU for these students. So right now, you're saying we can't, we're not backing y'all 100% because we have monies going to OSU for these students in that program? But while ago, you said we can't give monies to another school and back y'all 100%. So you're saying right now that we're not backing y'all 100% because we're giving to another school?
Could, could be. I mean...
Okay. Uh, one other question. And this is for Ms. Patricia Killian. Is she online?
Controller, are you online?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, Ms. Killian, there's 250,000 that we're wanting to donate to Baycone. Do we have the funding for it? It just a yes or a no?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Hicks. Representative Randall Hicks.
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, might not, might not be the correct answer, but I believe reintegration is networking with OSU, so the funding is not directly coming from the Muskogee Creek Nation. It could be a grant. It could be something else. I, I don't know the answer, but it's not directly coming from the council, as is 250 that's being requested today. And also, the other comment I have is, sure, we have, we may have the $250, $250,000. Let me ask you this, Ms. Patricia. Are the budgets done? Have they been completed? Have they been submitted to council? Have they been approved?
FY23 budgets have not been approved by council yet.
Okay, so...
Tribal, and I will say that again, tribal budgets.
Okay, thank you. My last, my last comment, Speaker, is I cannot support this because we have departments, we have employees that we're, we are responsible for. We have some that, that hasn't had raises, and this 250 that's being requested is to cover payroll Thank you sir.
Yes sir, my oh, last comments, any, last comments, yes, Representative Hicks.
I understand what Representative Hicks is saying about, you know, our budget hasn't been approved, that, you know, this two hundred and fifty thousand for something else. But looking down through our legislation we just passed today, we have spent more than two hundred and fifty thousand on an unapproved budget, which he's talking about. So I kind of feel there's probably some room for play. Thank you.
Thank you sir, Representative Randolph.
Hello speaker. One of the things that I was looking at is there is no itemized budget for this request. When we were, when, uh, our own people come before us and request amount of money, we're asked for an item, we ask for an itemized budget. We got to be accountable for the money that we appropriate, we got to know exactly where it's going, there's no itemized budget here, so there's, there's no accountability, and there has never been given no exact amount of enrolled Muskogee students, even though we've asked for it. And I'd just like to ask Dr. Randall, kind of same way, yes or no? Is there a potential it can affect, uh, CMN's accreditation and funding? Is there a potential?
I, I believe so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you speaker.
Representative Golden.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, speaker. I hear a lot of different, um, comments and concerns. At the same time, I went to Baycone, I graduated there, when I went there, I came from a small rural school, like a lot of our students do. I went on to college after that because of the foundation that I received at Baycone. The streets are named after Creek citizens, Creek citizens donated land, they donated money, and for how many years, they just lived on donations, and even the, the buildings are named, so we've invested from, in this college from way before the tribal college came to be. And we said, we wanted tribal college because we wanted it in our name, but we forgot about our original investment. And this is about our students, this is about making something available so they have an option. They don't have to go, we don't have to send our kids somewhere else to OSU or to OU just because it's a great college. We want a place for our kids to go and feel like it's family. They speak our language and they care about us, even when they didn't get paid, they still come, and they are still there for our students. They're an extension of us, and maybe we can't put our name on there and say Creek Nation College, that's okay. But we have an investment there, it's, it is possible that we can partnership and do some specialized things if we have to. But to me, we cannot let our children down, this is our future, and we have to continue our vest- investment. That's what I see from our, from the beginning of our kids that go to daycare, to Head Start, to elementary, and some of our schools, you follow dormitory, all the way up to our Creek Nation College and to Baycone as well. We're, this is our reservation, our people live here, and we want to keep them here, and we want to, to, to employ them. We want them to come back and teach our, teach our language, take care of our land, so it's a partnership to me. And this is just to drop in the bucket to help them bridge to continue that college and whatever else we can for our students, thank you.
My oh, Representative Golden, Representative Harjo.
Yes, a call for votes.
Call for vote has been called, roll call vote please.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
No.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
No.
Robert Huf.
No.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
No.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne.
No.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
No.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Speaker, you have nine in favor, six against.
Nine in favor, six against, NCA twenty-two dash one-four-eight fails. That concludes our regular agenda, other business, do we have any other business council representatives? Hearing no other business announcements, do we have any announcements?
Speaker.
Yes ma'am.
There will be, the Muskogee Riders are going to be having a toy drive, uh, on December the third, and they'll be leaving the Tulsa Indian Community Center at eleven AM headed to Oakmogee.
December three toy drive, outstanding, great, yes ma'am, any other announcement, Representative McHenry?
Uh, we're having a singing here at one-thirty this afternoon, all are invited to come and join in our Creek hymn singing and, uh, prayer service, thank you.
Outstanding, yes sir, any other announcements council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second speaker, Robert Huf, makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Representative Nelson Harjo Senior. I would like to ask Representative Galen Cloud to say her benediction, which will serve as our adjournment.
Yes speaker.
Hey ma'am, my oh, Representative Cloud, we are adjourned at eleven thirteen AM. Women's honor guard, we will do the signing of the bill in the chambers, just. Okay, well, it may be about ten, fifteen minutes, so please stand by, we'll, we'll come get you.
Test, test.
All right. All right.
Yeah, I heard it.
Test, test, test.